Please rise for the question. I am President of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, Sam, One Nation, Underdoubt and Invisible, The Virginia House. Roll call please. Katie Sabrowski here. You've seen all the input. Here, Rob Pedel.
President.
John B. Bronson here. Chris Sims.
Here.
Chris Silver, Chris Emerson. And Rachel Woodson is President.
Okay, public hearings tonight. We have none. Approval of the agenda. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any public comments on agenda items? None noted. Approval of the minutes dated January 2nd, 2024. First set, public hearing meeting minutes.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Or any opposed? Motion carried. Regular meeting minutes dated January 2nd, 2024.
Motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Communications, correspondence workshop, we have none. New business. I will... Do you want to start with the new business or do you want to do the batch plant first? I'm over that.
Should we batch plant first?
Okay, so, sorry, Rachel, we're gonna switch those two.
Okay.
So, we'll go to old business. Temporary batch plant, Mullins New Haven LLC, parcel 260633301002. Special land use request. Request. Discussion and action. So, representation here. Hi, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Thank you for tabling this from last month as I held victim to a blog like everyone else.
Sorry.
Yeah, so I appreciate the time and consideration and patience with this. Yeah.
I will let you. Do you have a presentation?
So, I made some remarks and I made them available to Becky House with the planning department. So, I'd be more than happy to share them and read them if she hasn't thus far.
I'm sorry, can you state your name?
My name is Nicholas Panacristo. And I am one of the co-owners of Mullins New Haven.
Do we have Becky's?
Is it this?
Is it this too?
Oh, yeah.
That is it right now. Like I said, I'm more than happy to present and share these remarks if you didn't have a chance to already review them.
You can present.
Okay.
Just for the record protection.
Great. Well, thank you again for having me. I'd like to also thank Becky for her support in this as this is a new process to us. And it's been quite a bit of a passion project personally, too. Based on our research and diligence into this site prior to acquisition and shortly following possession, we have found that previous ownership, whether it be from lack of resources or ability, have underperformed and disregarded fulfillment of social, economic, and environmental obligations that are associated with the great privilege of being considered a value-added member to communities such as New Haven. I'm honored to state to the record that this is no longer the case for this site. Since taking possession of this site on July 20th, 2018, we have committed to significant investments in cleanup efforts necessary to mitigation of inherited environmental violations. From March 2019 to June 2023, we have removed over 2,000 tons of construction demolition debris and an additional roughly 200 tons of abandoned scrap tires. That amounts to by tire, roughly 12,000 tires. All materials removed have been properly manifested in accordance with Eagle standards, utilizing company resources along with the state-sponsored Eagle Scrap Tire Grant Program. It is worth noting that these improvement investments were made prior to any knowledge of attracting a potential tenant or rent-reducing operations at this site. The successful cleanup operations have provided a safe and secure site conforming to Eagle environmental standards, paving the way for strategic investment in this site. Our phased development strategy can be broken down currently into three parts. Cleanup in Conformance being the first. This has been completed. Investment in Infrastructure, which is pending approval of this commission, and Full Tendency, which is agreed upon pending approval of this commission. Approval of the proposed site plan would allow ML Chartier, a third-generation environmental services company, to operate a full-service concrete, asphalt, topsoil, and sand recycling facility. This investment will provide municipalities, developers, and local contractors operating within the Village of New Haven and Macomb County a sustainable and affordable solution for not only sourcing materials necessary for new construction developments, but for providing a closed-loop recycling outlet for current infrastructure projects by way of accepting recyclable aggregates removed in the redevelopment process. The continued growth in the Village of New Haven along with neighboring communities, including the numerous residential development projects, recently recent repaving of the North Bay Industrial Complex and repaving of multiple I-94 entrance exit ramps is just the beginning of the ongoing investments we feel are warranted in the area. The location of this site would provide a locally sourced strategic partnership opportunity for all current developments, helping to ensure reliable and efficient completion of projects. In the event of the opportunity for our tenant to make this operation a permanent part of their growth strategy, we will immediately engage this commission in collaborating on necessary investments and approvals for permanent occupancy. As a highlight, this operation will initially require three to five full-time direct jobs for site operations with dozens of indirect jobs. Opportunities including but not limited to truck drivers, equipment operators, skilled trades, labors, along with cycling and its related vendors. Approval of this temporary site plan will ultimately pave the way for our long-term goal of bringing a safe and sustainable full-service recycling operation to the Village of New Haven to help provide for the growth and redevelopment we believe is warranted in this area. To fulfill this vision, we ask that this commission considers the following requests as variances bewated. The paving of a 28-foot curb and gutter section. We've provided for a 24-foot crushed aggregate surface on our site plans and it would be restored at the culmination of this project should we not move forward with a permanent occupancy. Traffic study. The limited traffic based on the number of anticipated full-time employees and operational truck traffic will have minimal impact on current traffic flow. The landscape buffer. Surrounding properties also in the heavy industrial zone areas do not have landscape buffers and a 50-foot setback from property lines with naturally occurring green space has already been provided for on the site. And the 250-foot setback from property lines. The residential setback requirement area has already been met at this site. The unique shape of the site would limit operational space, potentially restricting necessary fire truck turning radius. No problem. And additionally, all neighboring operations are within the heavy industrial zoning and no structures come any closer than 410 feet from the proposed plant. With that being said, I appreciate the time and consideration of this commission and look forward to continued collaboration to achieve our long-term goal of making the Village of New Haven a permanent home for our current industrial recycling operations. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you.
So, you're leasing this property to? I'm guessing.
No, this, I'm leasing this, we would be leasing this property to ML Chartier.
Okay.
Who is, like I said, currently an environmental service company, a third-generation company.
So, you're not selling the property, you're just leasing?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, in the request of asking, we do ask current purpose. So, do you have current contracts? Is this something you're just trying to feel the area to see if there's a need? What's the short term versus long term?
Operationally speaking, it's hard for me to speak on behalf of the proposed tenant being that they're their own company and their own strategy, but they did the project on the I-94 exit and entrance terrams along with the North Bay project and they worked with a lot of local contractors. You know, I can't speak towards direct dealings with the Village of New Haven or proposed developments here, but I know they have a strong foothold with Macomb County as a whole and they're looking to, you know, increase that space, operating in that space.
Do they have other locations where they run?
Not facilities like this.
New Haven?
They have locations in St. Craig County. And I believe they have a location in Lansing area.
So, I guess I'm a little confused because Mullins New Haven LLC submitted the site plans, but you can't speak to what they're gonna be doing there?
Well, I, we've provided for what they are actually gonna be doing there in this proposal with the crushed concrete operation, which is a self-contained unit. So, this aggregate would be coming off of job sites, projects such as I-94, North Bay, anything of the 23-mile construction projects that would be coming in on their trucks and then it would be going through the recycling process to create and not stack material to then be reused in the current projects or any potential developments in the area.
Okay, I'm gonna go around the table. John, do you want to speak on the different variables? Do you want to go the other way?
What was that?
Do you want to go the other way? What were your questions or would you like to?
I'm okay with the lady. If you want me to kind of hold it off, I can do it. Okay. So, I guess the first thing that I kind of heard in the description as well as all around here was potential language of this as a permanent type of development. Whereas the site plan kind of showed or expresses it to be a temporary.
Right.
Site. So, I guess the first point of clarification is, is this, which one is it?
Absolutely. I am more than happy to clear it there with that. This tenancy with this potential approval is going to pave the way to the necessary investment for us to move our, lead our GT scrap recycling, that is my operating activity, for us to potentially move here permanently. This investment and the tenancy here would provide for us to be able to do that, to recoup the cost already, you know, already experienced in cleaning up this site. And it is, it is quite large to the degree at which we clean this site. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with this property, but to move over 2,000 tons of debris from a previous tenant along with the scrap tires was no small undertaking. So, this is really to recoup some of that cost that we have already experienced and to provide for the investment and immediately start moving towards occupancy to moving our industrial recycling operations to the Village of New Haven. So, there are two different parts here. I will be back at this podium to address that, but this is the investment necessary for us to be able to get the resources and needs to move forward with that project.
So, the proposed operation, is there a duration that we expect it to kind of last?
We're expecting two years. Yeah, and that is, that's been discussed with the tenant. Yes.
Okay.
Are you planning for renewals or that the plan is gonna be commissioned in two years?
The plan would be, again, as I stated, depending on their strategic growth, if they see a long-term need there, we would go for, we would, I would come back here hopefully with them next time and we would go for a permanent occupancy and any requirements that are necessary to do so. So, right now, agreed upon is, is two years heading this approval.
And what is your intended operations if you, long term?
Long term, I would like to move my industrial recycling operation here. We do full-service metal, copper, brass, aluminum, steel, cardboard. Additionally to that, we do wood and certain plastics. Yeah. At an industrial level, we're not, it's not a retail operation that we would love to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they decided you wanted to stay there permanently? That, and if your plans are moving here?
It does not. No, this is a 32-acre site. Currently, as it's mapped out there, they're occupying potentially eight acres at the very most. And so, there would be enough space to cohabitate, if you will.
Okay, John, I guess the variances aren't something that we can necessarily decide on here because we don't have the jurisdiction to approve or deny those. But I guess like part of that would be, my concern here is if you grant those variances, those variances are going to stay in the property.
Understood.
As well as the uncertainty of permits of this operation. Because if it is, let's say, if it turns into a permanent batch plant, like the temporariness of that changes and the impact of that variance changes, I feel.
Yeah, but then I, like, the one that really, going from transitioning from one type of service to another type of service, you know, big concern to me is the variance in regards to the fire access.
Right.
I mean, because obviously, this, this is more problematic where fire could be necessary than the, I mean, it can be problems both ways, but I feel like requesting a variance or something like that in your long-term goal, like John said, it sticks with the property, so that's concerning.
Right, and I understand, and part of this, and I'm not familiar with the process as far as variance is and, you know, what's approved and what's not at this level, but I would say that from, you know, an outsider looking in, being that we are going for a temporary status here, I would just assume that coming back in front of this commission and requesting a permanent status, whether it be this operation or a different operation, we would then revert to the, the actual requirements in a certain occupancy in a permanent operation. I may be off base on that assessment, but I'm speaking out loud.
Yeah, I think at that point, I mean, regardless, like every two years according to the ordinance, you'll definitely come back and discuss the special ways status of it. Yeah, shifting from a temporary to a permanent would require like a new site plant because it's, it'd be a change in use at that point, sort of.
Absolutely.
But then it's just the, I can also foresee, not that I'm like a fortune teller, but like, but...
You wouldn't be here if you were, right? At least you wouldn't be.
Yeah. But I can foresee that, like, the claim of hardship that we've already invested in the site, therefore, we don't, we can't afford to move things to comply with the, with the requirements of the buffering or anything like that. But I do recognize your point of every other heavy industrial use, when you are abutting other heavy industrial zones, don't require a heightened level of buffering or screening or anything like that. It's just the nature of that district.
Yeah, and neighboring properties, we provided for a 70-foot buffer zone from the creek, so to speak, and the neighboring property on the other side does not conform to that. So, you know, there are, there are a lot of things that I did not state here that we provided for that were absolute non-negotiables, not just from this planning commission's assessment, but also in Macomb County and also from, you know, any potential for issues with truck traffic around that area or anything like that. So, you know, there are a number of, there are a number of requirements that we certainly provided for in this plan.
Okay, John, do you have anything more to add?
I think those are the biggest points are more so the things that are probably outside of the planning commission with regards to the variances. In terms of what the site will service, I think those questions were asked. The Alpkins has recognized a need for coming back every two years and that will be expected as part of reassessing where we stand with special ways of status that is granted. But beyond that, like, I believe most of my concerns in terms of the site plan specifically were addressed beyond, you know, the obvious setback situations. And then other than that, it's what Sir Mad might have and the village engineer might have in those comments regarding the site engineering.
Okay. I'll go over, are you prepared to?
Yeah.
No, I was ready. Sorry. Why can you?
Sure, Rachel.
Are you also talking? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The fire department's not here, but one thing we noticed that they did supply a simulation with a larger truck. The only issue I see with that is there's almost 1,000 feet of one, one access to the turnaround and usually there's a certain length that you require a turnaround in the middle, either a bypass or a turn or a T hammer. So, that, that may come in and that may change the, the drive configuration. So, that's my only comment on the, on the access road. One of the waivers they're asking for is a reduction of the pavement width from 28 to 24, being gravel. I believe the fire code asks for 26 minimum. 28 is with curb and gutter. So, if you delete the, if you're gonna waive the curb and gutter requirement, I believe the minimum is 26, not 24. So, just keep that in mind.
Absolutely, and that's something that, you know, we would have no issue providing for in revising in here and being that it is aggregate, we have the capability to, to meet that requirement, 26 feet.
You do touch base on the traffic study required and you touch it on the, on the employees, but nothing about the operation part of it. So, the trucks may, may have a higher impact than just the employees. So, we kind of want to see that detail also.
Certainly. After discussing with the proposed tenant here, it would likely be no more than 10 trucks daily is what I've been advised, which would be very similar, if not less, than the neighboring operation as I've spent time there over the years cleaning this site personally and I've, I've noticed the truck traffic there, so.
So, yeah, those could, this could be with your agreement or the operation permit. You can put all these conditions, you know, maximum daily hours of operation, all that, dust control. You can put all these conditions when you issue your temporary permit. Do we, do we know if it's concrete, asphalt, or both?
The site itself? Or what we are interfacing with?
The plant.
The recycling's concrete, primarily 21AA, 1x3. In that process, it does produce a certain amount of sand through that recycling process, but they're NDOT approved for 21AA and 1x3 deterrence.
Okay.
And also, I, I just, for the record, they are Eagle certified. You cannot operate a plant like this without already having a permit issued by Eagle, which is obviously the government.
Yeah, that was one of our comments. There's permits from the state, Macomb County, and the work commission. They all need it for this, for this operation. With two-year initial operation in mind, it's, does the village have any binding requirements for operation or in decommissioning?
Not that I'm aware of. John?
There is a performance guarantee that shows in the ordinance for concrete and asphalt plants that are also polyunder and directly next to that temporary concrete and asphalt plant section. Let's see, it says, there should be a cost reclamation of restoration estimation that is established in coordination with village engineer and as approved by village council. Engineers estimate shall be based upon review of the site plan, et cetera. There's details about the different aspects of the performance guarantee, but that is part of the ordinance.
So, is that cash or surety or what does not specify?
So, it looks like there is a surety there and it says that if here she fails to do so, the village council may cause necessary work to be completed and the necessary reasonable cost expenses so occur to her spending could also be incidental. The measuring legal cost shall be the obligation of and paid by the applicant. So, there are enforcement mechanisms there to kind of retrieve the cost.
Okay, we have to look into that. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's gonna be cash or surety. And it would be that the tenant or the line owner, whoever has granted the permit will be on the hook.
Sure.
So, yeah, we'll get some details on that for you. Are you planning to get temporary water, temporary sanitary facilities? You mentioned employees.
Yeah, in the, some of the site planning theories, actually, we've provided for sanitation service there, being what we know as order downs right now for the temporary status. The batch plant itself is a self-contained unit, so it does require non-cogradable water in a tank truck. That's for dust control. So, that would be provided for. Outside of that, we wouldn't be filling any utilities at this site or at this time putting a well-intercepted field. That would be for a full occupancy, long-term project that we are, we are actually providing for.
Okay. So, that, that needs to be clarified completely on the plan, on the detailed plans. Yeah, the remaining comments are, they can address that during the engineering stage if the planning commission grants over this site plan approval. So, the next stage would be a conditional approval subject to engineering, building, not so much building, engineering and fire. Supplying all the lines and insurance and all that stuff.
And with applicable variances being reviewed and...
And the variances, of course. Yeah.
And they want some clarification just like the level of traffic from the tenant if they have something more projected, more solid in concrete.
I can get that detailed. Yeah, absolutely, it's available.
As far as the trash enclosure, are you just using like?
Roll-off container service for what little generated waste. Again, it's a recycling operation, so everything coming in and leaving is recyclable aggregates. However, if there's, in the event of anything generated, we do have roll-offs that are provided.
Any lighting proposed? I'm sorry, I keep going on things.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we've provided for a little bit of site data, including like the water service, the water service plan, also the sanitary. We are using lighting and security, currently existing fence. Gate is in place. We will be installing the knock box as requested by the fire department here and security lighting is operated from generators. lighting is operated from generators, so we've got the portable generator for this site, and all of course, seeing that various events.
So, these are motion lights. You say, when you say security lighting, or this is...
The security lighting is, this is really for operating, but our operating hours don't fall outside of, I believe, 7:00 AM or 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, so it's really more for getting started, staging, firing equipment off, things of that nature. That's what the portable lighting system's for. It's not like a motion system.
No cameras or anything?
We don't have cameras provided for on this. As the property owner, my goal is to get some type of additional security there just for monitoring and in the event of anything, likely try and utilize a solar system for that, being that it's low voltage, and we can likely provide for that.
Good.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go over that. Hey, well, Rachel?
No, we're good.
Katie?
So, you're not pulling any electricity into this property whatsoever?
At this time, no. We have engaged GTE and their planners to see what that process looks like, because we will have to provide for that for permanent occupancy in any development.
I do have apprehension on granting variances, well, in general, I do, but, and then, what happens when the renewal comes up and you want to make it permanent and those things stick? And we're stuck with those. Along the railroad tracks, especially as far as the fencing and setbacks, and I...because these piles are quite high, right?
They would range at the very tallest 60 feet, I believe, is what the tallest stacker, to my knowledge, is capable of.
Or, you know, like, to the south, there's vehicles and, I mean, it's not, where, what you're doing is chunks and pieces and lack of the wording that I would...
Crush dagger hit is, you know, what we're...
But it's starting out as chunks.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know, I am a paranoid person, but without the proper setbacks from the railroad, if a chunk of that goes onto a track and derailed a train, I don't know, but it doesn't seem like this setback here is the place to not have all the proper fencing and setbacks from the railroad. That concerns me a great deal.
So, there is fencing there. It was existing prior to us acquiring and taking possession of the site, so there are setbacks from that fence that is existing of 50 feet.
It is a legitimate sort of fence, this black...
Well, technically, that black dotted line there that you see is actually the utility lines there, so the fence is just inside of that.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, so there actually is a fence up there, and then, you know, the landscape offered a naturally occurring green space, as I stated.
The fence just isn't noted on the plan.
Right. So, I guess your concern, and I am by no means a rail engineer, so do not hold it against me, but the force and the impact that it would take to move some of these chunks, as you stated, these are large pieces of concrete, you know, to essentially throw this like a football towards those tracks, I...that would be a very uncommon event, I would say, but, you know, I can try and provide you some additional pad on that if available.
And as far as...
It's not enclosed. The machine is an enclosed unit itself, so there is a hopper box that is fed by a wheel loader.
I guess I'd really like to look at, or maybe give us a video or something of how these things operate, so I can understand better what I'm looking at, because I don't have any experience in this. You can keep going.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying. I'm here to address any questions you have, absolutely. I can provide for a video clip on the screen. We'll get YouTube and put a, you know, aggregate batch plant in there, and, you know, there's a lot of footage of big machinery out there, and you can get the general idea. It's making big pieces into smaller reusable pieces of aggregate.
And your letter says asphalt, but the...you're not doing asphalt.
Well, it's not, it is not part of the operation as it stands, but some of these roadways, you are taking out asphalt along with the concrete, so it will be put into that machine and, you know, there is a byproduct there that is...
Inseparable.
Yes, but that is not the operational role of this.
And then...and I'm very sorry, I'm not used to these type of looking at this way.
Yeah, I understand. I'm good at them.
I just have one question. Do you have a staffing area on-site, like?
There is what we would call a mobile trailer.
Okay.
So, there is a mobile trailer there that would be hooked up to the same generator that is Thomas providing, so yes. And that's also where the sanitary, on-site sanitary...
Great.
The entrance and exit is on another property, correct?
This is a shared easement with basic metal recycling.
Okay. And there's, I mean, and there's a, it's an official easement, it's just not like a handshake easement?
It is an official easement.
Okay. I guess I just have a question for, maybe it might be for John. At what point does temporary stop being temporary and goes permanent? Like, how many times can they come back to us and say, hey, we want to extend this another year, two years? Before we said before, it's like, hey, you know, you've been here for a decade now, it's...
Yeah, so according to the ordinance here, there's that two-year cycle. I think the other thing that, what makes it kind of concerning is the nebulous definition of the project that it's surfacing, surfacing, because typically, what the temporary section is kind of addressing is, it's an accessory or incidental type of use for a specific project.
Okay.
So, when that specific project concludes, therefore, the site is no longer needed, which gives it that temporary nature. So, because it seems like this is kind of a, with the intent of servicing all the kind of infrastructure projects and things that are going around here, but not necessarily a specific contract, or let's say, this is for I-94, like three servicing of I-94, then that becomes a little more nebulous about, you know, when does that become? I would say, the ordinance doesn't specifically call that in there, however, if you start going to a second year, the plant commission has the ability to re-review the special areas permit and address the nature and like the temporaries of it at that time, because even later for reapproval at that point.
Not to interrupt, but I do want to state it for the record that our intent with this, again, is necessary investment to recoup the costs that we've already outweighed on this project. Upon approval, we are looking to move forward with AEW to get to a permanent occupancy, to get that permanent occupancy to be licensed and approved by this board as a whole service recycler, including not limiting to all requirements stated here above and beyond the temporary status, but that includes developing and building an actual permanent structure, identifying well and septic field or any other utilities that may be available. It's a tricky site and tricky area there, but we are already looking at that process and the next step. So, I just want this commission to know that our intent here, with or without this tenant looking to renew, we will be here upon the approval of this commission.
Sir, has a restoration plan been submitted at all, or is that maybe way out of the process?
No, no restoration plan. That's going to be part of the decommissioning bond.
Right, and in the site data as well, and it does provide for restoration there and use for the plant operation, would be graded for positive drainage and lot as aggregate surface, and in this, we are putting that intention on there to, you know, have that positive drainage towards that.
So, having that as part of the package would add a different level of potential of performance guarantee with restoration plan, but anything else that has caused us to force that and ensure that that two-year cycle is maintained?
I don't know if this is...I mean, I understand what we're discussing, the temporary aspect of this right now. So, maybe Barbara, is it reasonable to consider the long-term basis and the reasonability that these concerns can be met in the long term? Will you follow me? Like, in the long term, like, is it reasonable for us to sit at this table and consider that in the long term, we want this, but right now, but maybe in the long term, this isn't unachievable? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I think I understand.
I don't know. I'm not sure.
I hate to say it, but I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so I think, when it comes to the reasonableness of the long-term nature and those design criteria, that's perfectly something for us to consider, and obviously something we should consider, but I think that's something that ultimately will fall upon the desk of the ZBA.
Yes.
Because those long-term considerations are the things that are going to be the impact of what variances are granted. Because if we do approve this with condition, because the other day it has to go to ZBA, otherwise, whatever you approve doesn't really, can't be developed to approve, because it wouldn't be legal. You, let's say, approve with condition, we need the variance, so variance isn't granted, the site kind of then need to be kind of reconsidered and redesigned to follow compliance with the ordinance, or they end up assessing if the investment is appropriate for the site given the constraints that they have. But that'd be kind of the way to go about that.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
I guess it creates another question for me, but one, where's your current operation?
We currently operate in Chesterfield Township. We've established ourselves there over the last 12 years.
And so, is that a place you own or you lease?
We lease that property. We actually have additional property that we're considering acquiring here, just a couple doors down.
So then, okay, this deal here is temporary, then you have a two-year deal with this one, right?
Having this approval, yes.
Okay. So, after two years, and you recruit cleanup costs, you want to move your operation into the rest of this property, and then you'll continue to operate the recycling and concrete on your own as part of your operation, because that's that part of your current model?
I will not be doing recycled aggregate. That's not a space that I'm familiar with. I recycle metal plastic.
Oh, so all this here? What's that? All this here would disappear to be replaced by your operation?
That's correct. Whether they would like to go through another approval or a, you know, get down, two years down the road here, 18 months down the road, and look at a more permanent solution, that's their prerogative, and we would be back in front of this board, but one way or another, the investment of having this tenant there is going to provide us the necessary resources to go back to the drawing board for our permanent occupancy, to build those structures, to move our industrial operations up here as we've outgrown the Chesterfield facility. It'll still provide for our retail operations. So, just to state again for the record, in acquiring this property in 2018, we knew this was a serious undertaking. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars that has gone into this to clean up the known environmental hazards that were there that all of you are, I'm sure, familiar with. We acquired this site in anticipation of the growth we're experiencing, so it was always our intent to move into this community and become a value-added member of this community.
And then, the joint entrance portion here, this is all permanent concrete, this is not aggregate in any way.
This is, the permanent easement there shared with basic is concrete off 26th Mile. There are some issues there with, which I've been trying to work with the neighbors on as there's been some drainage issues and as they're cleaning, they're nodding, I know. So, there's a lot to be desired there, and I am working with the ownership structure there to try and come to a meaningful solution to clean up that front area and create the positive drainage that's necessary to operate efficiently, cleanly, and safely.
Is that what these hashburns are, that go around that area? Is that where you have a joint operation?
Let me just flip around here. So, where you see kind of the speckled area is a proposed deceleration and bypass line that we've addressed with the Macomb County Road Commission. It's something that we're just not capable of doing on our own because of the shared situation of the easement. So, we are going to need to see not just approval of this from our neighbors, a shared investment as well.
Yeah.
And it's something that we're, we are ready to invest in right now, so we are just waiting for that approval from them and that shared investment. The additional speckled area coming into the property is the concrete that we propose to extend, so we would like to make that concrete up to there and create some positive drainage, so we can hopefully get that grade up to a level where we're not experiencing the mess that we're currently faced with now.
And this concrete is all curved and...
That concrete is flat surface, no curve or gutter, to my knowledge. So, essentially, they've been utilizing a lot of that as parking with some aggregate, is as far as I know.
Sir Mad, I have a question on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that, so we have, they would require the agreement, the usage agreement, right, for the access. Will that be evaluated for the depth and the requirements that we're requiring for them to have on their property? Does that make sense?
Yeah, the proposed concrete need to be industrial rated concrete.
Right, would be the shared easement. Would that be evaluated for, is that just what it is, or is that being checked? Am I saying that correctly?
Well, for the easement itself...
Is that meaning the same requirements are necessary for...
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, every piece of aggregate we lay, every grade we achieve is going to be universal across this site, the neighbors are occupying in addition to the upfront interest there. We can only stand to benefit from cleaning this up from an operational standpoint, safety standpoint, and cleanliness standpoint, so.
Okay.
And we will get a copy of that, shared easement.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, the depth requirements, like, because we were requiring them, does that make sense? Am I right?
The thickness, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, now, anything that is not waived, which is on-site.
Right.
Gravel, that could be designed differently with a geotechnical engineer.
Okay.
And we're going to see that data, but for the concrete, the proposed concrete with the entrance and the shared easement?
The shared, yes.
That's a nine-inch is going to be required with curb and gutter.
Okay, so they would have to upgrade what they've done with it?
We're actually going to recommend going all the way to the property, because that's...
Okay.
I don't know why we stopped, but right after the turn, it does make sense.
There's a bit of, again, this is a couple moving parts with our neighbor, is they put an access gate there, so it's just something, a conversation to have with them. We want to be good neighbors. We don't want to create any issues for the current operator. We wanna be good neighbors. We don't want to create any issues for their current operations, so.
So since this is not temporary up here, this concrete and all this, wouldn't this also require sidewalk landscaping, et cetera, to meet ordinance? That this is gonna be permanent? And this is again, the sidewalk to nowhere story?
It's not this property. It's Basic Metal's property, John.
Well, that's where...
It's this little diamond corner here.
Yeah, well, that's why I was trying to figure out if this joint easement is this box that goes just that area and not, because obviously your deceleration or your lane is going in front of Basic Metals. But this is a permanent structure, so are we, wouldn't we require what? Because eventually the other areas will come before us at some point. And again, well, we don't have any frontage here. So it's shared access only.
Yeah, that's Basic Metal's frontage. We're just trying to alleviate any potential traffic hazards and anything of that nature with the traffic in proposing this deceleration bypass lane for the, you know, the car traffic that we experience out here. As far as sidewalks or anything like that, I mean, Macomb County would likely, and I've already discussed a number of options with them, would likely have to push the drainage ditch back a little bit. It looks like Basic had, and I, obviously I'm out there, so they have provided for a bit of a landscape buffer there, which I might argue could present issues from a visibility standpoint for trucks turning in and out. But that's neither here nor there. But yes, to this, with that's point, I'd be happy to provide for any of that.
So the sidewalk would not be required by the road commission? Let's make that clear. This is not on their property, make that clear also. But it's an improvement to Basic Metal's property. So this is kind of a little bit gray in here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. This is a permanent change, but are we bringing it up to current specs? Kind of no, because it's not their property.
Yeah, the ordinance says developer has to extend the sidewalk across his frontage. All frontage, all frontages. This is not considered their frontage, but it...
Once this is done, this is their frontage?
No.
No, it's, we don't... No, not your frontage. Oh, Basic Metal's frontage.
Basic Metal's.
Which isn't up to specs of what we would require. That's what I'm getting at, that. I know, I mean, it's more their problem than your problem if they want this, all this gear to go through. But it seems like if we're doing it, we need to do it, not half-ass it. Because once we do this, this is what we get to live with.
So, yeah, we're just discussing this out loud. And so Basic Metal, forget the batch plan for a second. If Basic Metal come in with a concrete opening, we would say the same thing, put a sidewalk. Because that's an improvement, all across your frontage.
But it's not Basic Metal's?
No, but they're investing from...
In proposing this, we are looking to improve the traffic flow and from a safety standpoint, decrease any risk of traffic-related incidents entering or exiting this site. That's why we provided for this proposal. This is something, again, we've discussed with Macomb County. They're very familiar with this particular area and...
We're providing for turning movements and things along that line, as well as slowing down when you're beating the road and creating a better approach in order to move crap around there. And we recognize that, well, it's just that, I'm in here by the way for the side here. So just as well as creating a shared anger severs, which exists there right now, and you utilize it no matter what the uses, to create this improvement is a significant improvement to 26 mile open traffic safety. And as you can ask, sir, that's a very expensive improvement to do, but they recognize that and the need for it.
I will say giving stuff behind cars, trucks, turning in Basic Metals, yeah, that's fun.
Yeah, but by putting the side pass lane, we're able to assist in their elements too. So it's a kind of good improvement.
So here's what's in my head, that improvements were made to New Haven Road and 26 Mile over many years ago. Which totally inadequate and not up to what it should be. And we're still begging and pleading, but it's significant enough that, hey, they invested money there and they didn't maybe do everything they should have done there in the first place. But you keep living with it. And that's kind of the way I feel about this. I'm gonna have to live with this until whenever. And I guess another thought in my head is, what are the easement issues? Because you look at this here, when they expand 26 Mile. Has there been a plan for what 26 Mile was gonna be? Because when I moved here, it was supposed to look like Hall Road. I've heard that been dumbed down since then, but is there a, that was the 2020 plan, which here we are past that plan. Is there the 2030 plan, or what is gonna happen to 26 Mile over here?
So we know, it's a double right-of-way, so I believe it's a 204 total. So 102 on one side, 102 on the other side. But that's road commission right-of-way. So when they go apply for the permit for the opening and the bypass lane, the road commission will make that determination if they need to dedicate that right-of-way now. Which I see a problem here, there's an existing building right off the bat, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a road commission thing. We don't ask for the right-of-way. We just need what the road commission is gonna require as part of their permit. And as Sir, we work on the basic plan, our firm, with Macomb County Road Commission to create that right-of-way. So we are part of the team for that, our firm, and another engineering department team. And he's correct, it is a 204 foot. But as Sir also said, is that when site plans come in, you ask for the right-of-way on their frontage or them to grant an easement for sidewalk purpose, public utilities, or things along that line. But this is not one that they own, they don't own the building that's sitting there, as you said too. So what we're trying to do is make improvements that allow better operational characteristics as we sit here today and in the future for this. And at some point, Macomb County is gonna come and take a building in 59 through here or whatever. And that's, well, I was going to Calhoun, and they started talking about it, 59, that was in 1982. So a long time ago.
Yeah, I remember this being a tooling though.
Me too.
And since this is a temporary in nature, the whole facility is in temporary in nature. I would be more comfortable if you require the sidewalk at the permanent station, being off-site, not on the other side.
I'm just seeing when they leave and this is, the temporariness is gone, that this is...
Would he go to flood out?
I'm not leaving. So this is, this is the first stage to a long-term relationship and investment. The tenant may leave, but we will absolutely be here.
And that would be temporary to him, but even if they did go away, it's still a better approach onto the road than what exists there today. So you've got an improvement above and beyond what you have now in many aspects.
In addition, one consideration, I think, as we talk about sidewalks, and I'm not sure, I didn't mean to open up a can of worms here, but you do have to consider the railroad crossing. So there is a potential liability to sidewalks to nowhere that shares, parallels, or runs perpendicular with the rail crossings. So there's a little more to this.
Yeah, that's everywhere.
Yeah, that's on Clark Street.
Yeah, you stop, and then you continue, so what is warrants that? So if the commission is comfortable with the permit requirement of the sidewalk, I will endorse that.
Anybody else? Okay, I would just like to say, thank you very much for your information feedback tonight. I'm gonna say this, and you guys can feel free to disagree. I feel like we took a lot in tonight, and I would personally like a summary, summary on like the long term, the short term, everything in terms of how to draw, back out the planning, and consider tabling for one month. Is that reasonable?
I would support that.
I just feel like there's, unless you guys are ready to make your decision, that's up to you.
This is very raw, in my opinion, to me.
I feel like there's just some things that we really didn't know going at the table prior to coming here. Rachel, you have thoughts on that?
No, I agree. I mean, this was in my box today when I got it, so it's two pages to take in at all this year.
Anybody very excited about that?
Yeah, I'd like to see more, like you said, about how the operation, this works. I don't know exactly what it does.
It recycles aggregate.
Well, I know that, but I mean...
It creates what we thrive on, the base of material for developments. And I know, it's, I'm not trying to inundate you with information here. Am I gonna hear this grinder decor part? I mean, I don't know. No, this is a heavy industrial area. This is, you've had a metal shredding operation next door for years. Your shear is heavy industrial. There's a timetable on operating hours here. Just across the railroad tracks, there's the Ajax plant. There is a trucking operation next door. Those trucks are firing up every morning. So in providing for the operational hours, there, I don't see how that would be a concern here. Especially given the industrial zoning and the proximity, how far it is set back from any residential property, so.
Yeah, I just don't know all the things I don't know. It's not something I've lived with, obviously, here. I have lived with the other things and, okay. But I have lived with whatever you're proposing, so I'd like to know more about it as well. I'm just trying to throw these things at you, so between now and next month, you know, get more answers.
Just by way of clarification, I wanted to understand, provide people with a full package the next time around. Here's the several things I've heard. One, 26-foot wide road, no matter what, makes this so perfect. Can you take care of that? Two, some idea of the cost of demolition, of the demolition of this facility, two years down the road, and it's no longer there, provided by, it's something that Sir would be acceptable to. And I think, you know, I believe we've already addressed the, involved in the approach, and I think we've made it safer, that's my opinion, maybe not yours. And then the other thing would be some, the third major thing would be some idea of what the facility and the equipment on there are going to look like, so she had a view of what's there, how it operates. Are those the three major things that we have to do?
I'm also curious about why wouldn't I, just putting electricity into this property now? But that might be, again, your cost issues and the fact that it's temporary, but...
Yeah, there's a whole planning element with TTE you'd have to provide for. So I think without putting the cart ahead of the horse, so to speak, as we look towards our long-term mission here, we'd have to provide for that for our permanent occupancy and structures, filling out load sheets, things of that nature, to which, you know, we could, I suppose, propose a temporary drop, but that's not a long-term solution for building a permanent structure.
What does this equipment run on? Gas, propane?
It's a diesel-powered mobile unit, yes. Yeah, that goes for everything on the site.
I think I did make that sorry, I didn't ask others. What is the dust output? Will it impact 26 Mile?
No, it certainly will not. So these machines are engineered with a dust suppression system, system already engineered, manufactured into the system. Like I said, there's a self-contained non-coated water unit that's attached to this. And then we have addressed dust suppression here. Dust control is managed with the plant system, with spray bars, engineered and manufactured out of the itself. And you also need an Eagle permit to operate one of these. So you need to be in conformance with the air quality standards as set forth by Eagle, so that's our job.
Thank you.
With that in potential, we're looking at, I guess, like with the dust, with water, is it corrosive in nature? Is it damaging in that sense?
No, there's no chemicals in treated in this process, and we do have the onsite water retention pump that we would be digging up, so that's ours. And that is a line of pot as well, so.
And what about smell?
Smell would be, you know, it's something that I've never experienced around plants like this as we do have customers who recycle metal that is generated by this plant or plants similar to this. And this is just general, like, aggregate, crushed stone, things of that nature.
But operated by diesel?
Well, it's operated under permit from Eagle. So Eagle will come home and inspect periodically. It's no different than the crushing operations that Hammer had down in Chesterfield Township or the Dan's Excavating, get over by Cabellos and stuff like that. They're going to be containing and keep their original property.
So you've mentioned the Dan's Excavating over by Cabellos. That's kind of what this is gonna be?
What's that?
The Dan's Excavating that was over by Cabellos, that's what this is?
Well, that was Dan's Excavating, obviously the largest contractor in the state, so I don't know that it's going to be like that. I was just talking in terms of dust or smell and things along that lines. I don't see where it's gonna be.
Because I can picture that if I have it, I can't picture this.
It's a largely scaled down version of that.
And there's another crushing plant in Shelby Township on Jimmy's Drive, just west of Shelby and 24 Mile Road that Florence would then operate.
You mentioned, sorry, you mentioned that there is the site, they are currently operating in Chesterfield Township, correct?
That this proposed tenant is operating just, no, that's where my current, oh, the site now. Yes, we've been there for 12 years now.
Really, about 21 and a half?
I guess we're half a mile up from North.
That's a cheap site there, I mean, to your point.
So part of what we've granted in the permit is the time, the six to seven period, and you're saying 10 trucks, but what if he decides the week after, I'd like to run 250 trucks through here a day?
So that's where it would be defined in what is approved? You just outline whatever's projected by the applicants, make that part of the condition?
And yes.
Six-year vision, if there wishes to be an amendment to that, and you go through the process again, you make the alterations to capacity, they could do like a not exceed number or whatever it is, but you can put some type of cap on there, reduce to assess if they need to at that time.
You know, I always have this fear for, oh, worse case, we said this, but... And no offense to you, but your tenant, you know, no.
That's a duty of a special language you already put in the frameworks associated with the operation.
Yeah, and from my standpoint, that's something that the tenant would have to agree to and operate under those constraints, so, which is probably good for you too.
And like you say, the tenant, the proposed tenant on this obviously is a substantial-sized environmental contractor and payment contractor, so they're good, they're local and common. Now, for next, you know, are you gonna favor this?
Yes. Oh, well, maybe.
Maybe. I think it would be beneficial for the applicant to know exactly what they need to bring in. If you're just talking of clarification of...
I'm more so, I feel like they provided a lot of information. I would like more, just you, both yourself and John, to put it all together for everybody at the table. Like, does that...
Well, that's normally done by the applicant, and you're talking about an operational and a future plan.
Well, we have, you know, the things that we've brought up, which we have covered.
I saw three or four.
Yeah, and I think too, the fire, that was the one, the eight, the fire access, just to make sure that that is met. But other than that, I think that's all that. I think that's where we're at.
I still have concern about the setback along the railroad, and maybe once I understand your operation better, I can ease that, but...
And your concern is, what provisions are gonna be made to keep large pieces of concrete from the end?
Protecting the railroad, right. I don't want to look at, you know, the news of trains.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly, you don't want to be bothered to add that.
And then I'm running from the chemical spill to the body.
So I guess, a standard or understanding of
How to be split?
Potential pile collapse or anything like that. If there's a billboard, is that something that could be, that could happen? Or if there's a, get into a narrative?
The engineering specification towards that?
Yeah, or if there's something that occurs, or something like, where there's a slide material or something like that. Or if that's considered when you stack the materials, maybe some... Um, or if that's considered when you stack the materials, um, maybe some type of condition on that.
So, I think having the user provide a kind of a general overall operational plan and how they do it, just for you to better understand how they're going to do it and maintain site safety and.
Yeah. And how stable are those files, like, to Mr. Penelope, am I saying that right?
Actually, you did. Good job, man.
I got something going for me.
Really happens.
But to your point, you know, I don't know what I don't know. Um, you know, I've, I've been more than forthcoming with our intent here, um, not just with this, but long-term as well. But we're happy to, uh, give those answers and that information from the, uh, the potential tenant.
And I do like to see complete plans. I hate writing on it and saying, oh, they're going to do this later on, and somebody's going to catch them in this spot and all that jazz. I, I'd like to see, you know, things that are pretty, uh, close to accurate. Before we, you know, he, when we approve it, because I'd like to see it on paper before I approve it, you know what I mean?
So, so when you say complete plans, things that show, uh, vertical on the plans or?
The fence, that's currently there, um, you know. Cause I don't see a fence here at all. So, where are the, where are these current fences and buffers that are, whatever? Is there natural buffers already on this property around this?
Well, I guess, as you stated earlier, there is, there is a natural space buffer that is occurring there, uh, naturally, and then, you know, the existing class A is there.
If this was a normal, like, a, a commercial corner, we would see the, the heights of the burns and we would see, you know what I mean? I'm sure you know what I mean as an engineer. But, so we're seeing it a little bit differently than what most of the projects that come to us receive, you know what I mean?
I mean, um, just, I mean, just speaking on behalf of ABW, what they have actually provided for here in the, uh, lighting and security, currently an existing fence and gate is in place for the, you know, it is provided in, in this, um, it's not easy to see in a visual overhead. I'm not sure if we can write it blue link or something like that, but it's stated in the site data.
And are you fencing off your section or are we fencing off the whole properties? You'll have your own thing, or own gate, sorry.
But, but, yeah, there's already a, a gate, security gate provided for there, um, and, uh.
I'm basing it's property.
No, on our side.
On your side.
Yes, we have our own gate there because it is an easement, uh, you know, it's, it's an interesting layout, uh, but with operational traffic and whatnot, uh, we did not want to have a, a gate. There was a security chain formerly, um, rate as you enter our actual property, not the easement.
Okay.
The issue with that is if there was any waiting period for trucking, it would slow down our operations in the way. So, we have our own gate that's provided for, uh, next area, yeah.
My teenagers weren't very, uh, they were, they were very fun for me. But, uh, yeah, I can see myself cruising back there and taking my car and, you know what I mean, so. You'll, you'll have ways to keep all that kind of crap out.
You're not going to get a tractor, you know, or a car that went through a twelve-foot.
I mean, I don't know what kind of vehicle you drive, but potentially the creek.
Oh, oh, no, no idea. Um, alrighty, so, motion?
Well, we didn't say what does.
We didn't take a, a vote on your motion yet.
I didn't make a motion. I made a suggestion.
Oh, I seconded it to the way it's, the table.
Okay, so, a motion to table?
Support.
All in favor?
I, um.
Any opposed? Can I watch and carry? So, we'll have, we'll be in touch and whatnot.
If you two gentlemen confirm a list and.
Absolutely. And, um, first Tuesday of next month, I don't have my phone. Is that next week?
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you all for your time. I know it was quite a bit of information to take in in one, in one setting here, obviously, as we'll be back here, um.
March fifth.
Yeah.
Okay, March fifth, okay.
Same time, same.
Same time, same place.
I appreciate all your feedback and.
No, absolutely. Thank you for the consideration.
I also emailed all of you guys a YouTube video of an aggregate plan.
Oh, thanks.
Hopefully it was a nice one. Would you be able to see that too? Could you?
I will say, this is a framework that, that they're operating to. This is, again, well-established, they're a generation company, so they, they maintain all of their equipment and sites that they operate on. And, um, they operate in a very professional manner. Otherwise, we would not be looking to have this type of partnership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Cool, okay. Okay, so, um, we're going to go back to the new business, uh, downtown zoning, um, discussion for now.
Um, so, let's just put out there a check out, um, because there is a request for rezoning, um, at the existing Crossroads Liquor Store, at, um, Clark and May. But it's a partly larger narrative, um, that I think we, we could consider. Um, for Main Street and something that possibly was overlooked, but now has kind of showed up in several different situations between the library, couple other sites along Main Street. So, in the existing future land use plan, what we adopted in the master plan, we identified the desire to extend the downtown district along the historic Main Street. Um, wanted to ca, capture Park to Greshit, carry people onto, to Main Street, and then just develop some of that historic area and some of those, like, traditional, like, flat iron kind of parcels and everything else. We've slowly seen the desire to potentially redevelop sites along Main Street. To improve the site, to expand on these sites, to improve the safety of these different sites of operations, um, and to reinvest into these parts of the community. Given their current zoning, which is single-family residential, there's quite a few constraints and quite a few different setbacks that are going to be required in these different developments if they were to be developed. Pretty much requiring a number of variances to anything, and there's only one purely exists, including the existing library. So, if the library were to catch a fire today, that, that, they wouldn't be able to develop with gas and stans today, because it would be not good for me. So, the idea is, this part of a broader movement is to potentially expand the general business downtown district through Main Street, through that flat, flat iron part of the Waterloo, like, library there, um, and, uh, including Crossroads Liquor Store, which is currently not performing Class A, it was already granted net designation, so it can exist as it is. But if it were to, something were to happen, and we'd want to redevelop that site, we could, we would, the current site, um, without getting, probably five variances. So, if we are to look at the rest of that area and its potential expansion downtown, it could avoid a lot of various issues and still achieve probably a character that would be desirable to the community and would be, um, incontinently with, with the rest of the area. So, before I was to review their rezoning request of their site in the Crossroads Liquor Store and offer an opinion on that recommendation, I want to bring up the topic to you guys on this matter to see if the desire was there for the planning permission to consider that, um, because that will greatly influence how I will look at the recommendation. Cause currently the recommendation, it would be difficult, it's a solution for them, but it'd be difficult to say that this isn't, is coherent with the future land use plan because it's not. However, the intent isn't necessarily incompatible with what we see. So, I'm just wanting to pitch it out to you guys, see what you guys think, have you guys discuss it, give us a direction, kind of question.
So, basically, basically, when we did all the rezoning, we did all the rezoning to avoid spot zoning, and now there, we're going to start potentially.
The touchstone. So, if, if it was done without the consideration of the overall plan, it'd be considering a spot zone. If it's, it's, if it's related to the future land use plan, even if it was rezoned, it is technically a spot zone, it's still giving part of the long-term vision, and that's allowable in that situation. If that makes sense, if that's clear.
So, would we, should we looking then with this discussion to rezone formally aspects of, they're thinking like Main Street, like going right down Main, like all the homes on those sites?
So, we wouldn't necessarily be rezoning at this moment, and we.
More future land use?
Future land use, it would be the recommended vision of what we could potentially do. Doesn't mean that it could have those homes there. They can exist as they are, um, and it just allows for the flexibility of different types of uses, as well as redeveloping opportunity so you don't have to get all the variances, which are undesirable, but a lot of variances, include avoid variances. And I, and I don't think it's necessarily incompatible with what we already have with the library, the, 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 here on the Mount Coffee's across the street, and they have a lot of profit across the street. And there's, there's a character that's in that area, um, that's very more like a small-town downtown type of feel to it.
So, I guess my question would be, I mean, you said that a bit at the library right now, you could build as it is. If you do, designate all down Main Street as, you know, downtown, you know, general business, um, and one of those houses right now, could they rebuild their home?
Yep, cause when we have the downtown, it has, the, 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 the setback is zero. So, you could have a greater setback if you want to, um, and you'd be able to, to have that as, as part of the development, yeah. And you could have such a uses in a downtown as well.
I mean, I, I participated in this conversation once years ago, and part of the fear was like, uh, so this house burns down. Um, it's, it's now downtown district. Um, I'm going to put my taco down there in between, you know, Mrs. Martin, Mrs.'s, uh, home, you know what I mean? So, are we talking about allowing the homes to become general business with the downtown is a possibility, which would eventually squeeze them all out if it's.
So, if they have, um, if they aren't rezoned, then they have to maintain the existing zoning. Um, if they are rezoned, then you have the potential of having a business at a house, which isn't necessarily uncommon for a small-town downtown.
I love it.
You see that Columbia, you see that Unica, it's integrated usually pretty well into that community fabric, um, and you kind of see it kind of popping up here and there. But that is a potential that it could be. As it is, single-family homes could become an, an at-home business, so they could actually already operate as some form of business. It just wouldn't be a full-scale business, o, openly, so.
Well, they would be allowed signage and?
Um, with a single-family, there's, there's some restrictions on signage and, and keyling and everything else. If they do have a business, um, let's say it's rezoned to a, a downtown area, and you have a business use there, maybe then you need parking standards to make sure it's, it's applicable to the site design and everything else, so. So, whatever you would have would have to be considering that site and the adjacent properties.
So, in order to do what you're talking, like, crossroads, it, it's not a, we're not putting together an overhaul cohesive plan to redevelop the downtown. We're just doing that piece up there. And, but you're setting the ability for hodgepodgeing, I guess is my, lack of a better word. Of more commercial path that we're in there, without still having a downtown, I mean, I think the key to us is the natural downtown, the downtown first.
Yeah.
And then you can.
And I, and I think, like, whenever there is a transition, even within the existing downtown, you, you kind of already have an existing hodgepodge. Um, just cause in transition of, of land development, there's a long transition as tenancy changes, ownership changes, redevelopment and investment opportunities change and have their own flow. So, it's like, you, you can have the vision, even if you don't make the changes, there's going to be a long-term process between now and when the, the fruition of this comes to be. Um, so, it's, um, it's something that there could be a, yeah, a hodgepodge here.
Seems like the founder's got to come first. That property sets the tone for what we may do in the future to set a tone here, 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 and there before we actually have.
I'm just going to say, I, I, I don't know if you guys are able to pull up the future land use, but it's really, we're not that far away from the corner currently. We're only a couple blocks when you pull it up. I mean, to extend it to, I mean, to extend it to include the library seems reasonable on its own, just, I mean, we, we are already there.
And I, and I think the other thing too is, like you said about the property site or any other site that we, that could be potential catalysts. I think that's, that, those would be great things to see happen. Um, and we definitely love those conversations to happen, those investments to happen. But that's going to be dependent on those, the ownership of those parcels. I think this is, what, does the vision make sense if we were to extend it? And then we also have a potential site that is willing to do the investment now and improve the safety, ask themselves that site now, and invest in that corner now. Um, it's just a matter of will the future land use plan permit that type of thing to happen? And that's not to put pressure on you guys, it's more so just the reality of, of what the, what the situation is. So, if it makes sense to have it extend through to the library area and potentially in there, and then, yeah, transition out of town, then we can potentially go down the path, and I have some direction on how to write my review. If you don't think that makes sense, then that makes, then that's clear to you.
Um, so essentially, we're just looking at clearing the path to avoid variances moving forward with that, and, but that already gains some hodgepodge, at least it's something. And then, I mean, if there's a historical home, if someone moves out and they're, like, making it a business, do they also keep it, I guess, like, historically?
So, and, and that's where, like, there might be a bigger conversation about what the village wants to do as a whole. Um, do they want to establish a historic district? Do they want to establish a DVA? Do they want to establish some type of design guidelines for different things and protect certain characteristics, but also try to deal away with, you know?
We just want people to come off of Greshit down there at least, and so that sets that tone and paves the way and makes it easier.
But, yeah, identifying the downtown, potentially allowing those things that you've already granted to the same non-conforming Class A, saying if this was something that was worth keeping, then it just allows you more of an avenue to invest that site without giving twenty variances.
I think it discourages what residential aspect is still left of Main Street from to, I was, like, if I drive through Richmond and, yes, you know, I got two miles to drive through, here I got, you know, a half a mile to drive through. And does it, I, 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 especially since there's been so much improvement on the houses on Main Street over the past couple of years. People have been putting a lot of money into them and really fixing them up. I hate to lose residential on Main Street in that section.
We can stay where we're at.
Yeah, there's not.
So, this isn't a discussion to rezon, this is just a discussion to change the future land use.
Yes.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, we're setting the tone of what is to become.
But if you look at what we currently have, we stop at Falc, so we're going up two blocks. That, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, what, what do you think, just for perspective, what do you think? Like, do we go up to Clark and make that whole, like, just for symmetry, just, and then come across, or?
I think they should do Clark and potentially the intersection of that corner.
Uh-huh.
Um, as corners and intersections seem to be natural areas of activity.
Right.
So, for, for neighborhood uses, especially because those are larger parcels, especially in the north, uh, corner there, those are larger parcels that would probably more ripe for commercial-type development versus residential, especially that it fronts Main Street like that. Um, so if you capture those areas, would make sense. You're also next to an institutional facility, like, you have the school, the school properties there.
Yeah. Should be a net liquor next to a school, should you?
Right.
Well, there's, there's.
More pot, but hey, you know.
There's also a law of regulations that kind of govern those things from the state, so they, they will determine what they're up to with those things, but, um.
Is this, the property owner is the same property owner that had the, the pot farm and the house? Is this, the property owner is the same property owner that had the pot farm in the house next door?
No.
These are no relation or?
Absolutely not.
He has the liquor store owner.
Oh, okay.
They're not the same owner.
They're not the same.
So, okay, for the sake of the discussion, I mean, do you, how do you guys want to move forward? Do you wanna put that this officially on the agenda or something beyond? You know, are we informed enough by John to put that on there?
I'm definitely not informed enough yet, I think. We need to see more.
I think the discussion keeps happening. I have more questions on that one.
So I guess what I'm kind of looking for is, does this seem like an idea that you want to entertain?
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm listening, yes.
And after that, I can draft a draft map of what the expansion would look like of this future land use map. And then we can kind of do like a working session of figuring out what it looks like and what parcels we can capture and everything else. But just knowing the intent would help me. If it's something you want to entertain, it's a dead on arrival and then that would help.
I would like to entertain it.
Yeah. I do have one question. Timing of this, should we wait until you address your, the current request and do it afterwards? Or should we go forward with it now?
I'd say we would just go forward with it next month. And start working on that to make sure that we get it rolling and at least get the ideas formulated.
Okay. Okay, so I'll put it on the agenda for next month.
The map itself, I can get done pretty quickly.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for John on that? Good, okay. Planning rules of procedure, I will leave this for Rachel.
So it has been discovered that there were planning rules of procedure that had been passed for the planning commission. In October twelfth, twenty twenty one council meeting. Twice in this planning rules of procedure, it says that the planning commission has passed it. This never came before us. So I wanted all of us to get, I just included in the packet and I'm discussing it here for all of us to get eyes on it. But I would like us to actually look at this formatted. I mean, even looking at the agenda format in here isn't how we have our agendas. So, I mean, there's a lot in here that I don't like and there's some here that I'm thinking can be omitted and changed. And if we're gonna have planning rules of procedure, I think the planning commission needs to be involved in.
And additionally, we can't find where they've been documented anywhere.
So you were saying these were drafted by.
I'm saying they were drafted by someone on an October twelfth, twenty twenty one council. And that the council at the time passed them without having any planning commission input.
But is that where that gets actually done? Is that?
No.
Council, isn't that all within our formal governance?
The very first sentence of these bylaws and rules of procedure are adopted by the planning commission. That's the very first sentence.
What's the last sentence?
The very last sentence. Hold on, let me go through seventeen pages. Says, "These bylaws were duly adopted by a majority vote of the New Haven Planning Commission membership during a regular meeting held on blank twenty twenty one."
Well, it's here in twenty twenty one, we didn't do that.
That's what I'm saying. We never passed these, but they got brought to council that said we did pass them.
Okay, so and I'm just gonna. I think he's done.
I just swear to God.
So if I'm hearing this right, somebody wrote those, said we passed them, brought them to council.
Council passed them.
And the council said, oh, they passed them, so we're gonna pass them too.
Yes, that's exactly what happened.
But it didn't go to the council anyways, does it? And your planning makes its own.
Basically, and there was zero percent input from any person on this planning commission.
And at the end of the day, they're not signed, dated or officially anywhere, but they were adopted by council, so. The only record of them existing is an email to, maybe me, I don't even know. And them being adopted at, they're in the minutes, but they're not officially anywhere, so.
So I included them on a packet for all of us to take a look at. I can give print copies before we do care if somebody wants a copy of it.
So and I'm going to put that on next month's agenda?
Yeah.
I have my notes on it. Okay, so that will go on next month. So everybody's good on that. You all have a copy. Put your feedback, write it down and all the things. Good?
Yep.
Okay. Well, planners report, public comments on non agenda items?
That would be you, sir. You're our public, honestly.
I'd say John pretty much had it on everything, you know. I guess next month, it'll be on the agenda as well, right?
No.
No, not for us.
The future land use that part will be on this agenda, but the rezoning will be at the village council be next week.
Correct.
Is that on the agenda?
I don't think it's on this month's.
It's not on, but if it's going for the Z B A, it would have to be on the agenda to set the Z B A hearing for March.
Okay, good. Call from two. And motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to date thirty eight.
Second. All in favor? And opposed, motion carried.